Our regular meeting, but a public hearing on the Forest Hills School District 2016-2017 district calendar. To start discussion, I would ask our superintendent, Dr. Jackson, to introduce the subject and then we would be in order to accept public commentary. Dr. Jackson?
Oh, absolutely. The Ohio revised code as of last year states that before our district approves a school calendar, that it must first have a public hearing at least 30 days prior to the approval. So with that, we've already, today we'll be voting on the 2015-16, but we're here to talk about the next year's calendar of 1617. As we've said in the past, 2016-17 is going to be a very interesting year for us because, and a very exciting year because of the work that will be being conducted over the summer months in particular to our facilities. And so this particular calendar is compacted. And I'd like John Eckert, who is in our office, who works on our calendar, to kind of maybe share some of those things with you. John? Yes. You may have to turn the microphone on, John. I shut it off.
Yes. The calendar, as Dr. Jackson said, is a rather compacted calendar. I believe there is an attachment to the board docs with you. Where we are going with this, after talking with Mr. Johnson, Ms. Carnahan, Ms. Ryan, everybody, we need to have a large summer break to facilitate as much building as possible and to have the buildings vacant while construction's going on. So with that, we've eliminated some of the breaks within the traditional school calendar. This would have students' first day starting September 1st and finishing on May 31st. The large things that will be a little bit different from the past two years, the Christmas break or holiday break will be, start on the 23rd of December, and so it'll be, you know, six school days off only instead of 10. And then in the spring, we will have what I've coined a spring pause, but it'll be a Friday and a Monday off for that spring break time, and that will be April 14th through the 17th. And with those and the removal of the fall break date also, that will allow us to compact this calendar and give us a little stronger summer work time. We're still in, we are still meeting the 177 days of instruction at the high school level, 176 at the elementary level, and the teacher workdays are all accounted for. The professional development for the teachers is going to be front-loaded that year, and Ms. Adams is looking forward to the excitement of those possibilities there also.
Thank you, John. And again, this is a public hearing. If there's any comments, you can find the proposed calendar online. You don't have to make those comments tonight. You can email them or call us at central office with that. Thank you, John.
Do we have anybody who wishes to address the board on the calendar? Seeing no one, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Thank you all very much, and in about one minute, we'll begin our regular meeting. This time, I call it order, the regular Board of Education meeting of the Forest Hills School District on February 23rd, 2015. The treasurer, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. I know Mr. Fruman had a prior conflict with his business and may wind up with us later this evening, but probably will not. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next thing is our required safety briefing. As you can see, margins and Cx's are to your left, behind you, and in front of you. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Next up is approving minutes of previous meetings, approval of minutes of the organizational meeting of January 5th. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? No, excuse me. Mr. Tepfer, please call the roll. Different meeting.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Approval of the minutes of the Business Advisory Committee meeting, January 19th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. And approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting, January 26th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Moving on, let's see, correspondence? Do we have any correspondence from the?
Yes, Mr. Smith and the board. I have a couple pieces of correspondence. First of all, we recently received from the Ohio Department of Education certificate that again is congratulating the Forest Hills School District on being named to the College Board's 5th Annual Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. We talked about that about a month, month and a half ago in regards to that particular achievement. That basically talks about the number of AP classes that we take, that we provide, as well as the number of students that are taking those particular classes, as well as the high achieving students that we have in our district. So I will have this framed and we'll put it in our central office, okay? Second piece of information that I would like to share is from the Ohio School Boards Association. And each year, the Ohio School Board Association presents its Award of Achievement to board members across the state who have demonstrated dedications to self-improvement, services for their association, and work on behalf of their own school board. OSBA is pleased to inform Forest Hills School District that one of our board members has been again honored to achieve this particular award, and Mr. Smith, that would be you. So congratulations. I just want to say, Randy, I don't know where you have the energy to do the things that you do. I'm learning more and more and more about the different boards that you serve, which are several, not only Forest Hills Board of Education, but lots of other boards and different across the state. In particular, I know that all the work that you do for Ohio School Board Association, so thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I do have one piece of correspondence I'd like to share as well. Most recently, we were very fortunate, or I wasn't fortunate, but one of our staff members was very fortunate to be named from the American Legion Post 318 Anderson as the Teacher of the Year, and that particular individual is Laura Lilly, an elementary teacher at Maddox Elementary. And she was recently notified that she has also won the Hamilton County Teacher of the Year from that organization. So she will qualify for the district and then hopefully go all the way to the state, which is, so congratulations to Laura Lilly, Maddox Elementary Teacher. Thank you.
Mr. Tepfer, any correspondence? Moving on to procedure for public commentary, as most of you know, this is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. There's a time for public participation during the meeting, and it's actually coming up after the next item. Individuals that'd like to share their opinions or comments or concerns on a topic on the board's agenda should list the item on a note card that's available from Mrs. Monk up here on the side table. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a group and be within five minutes. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, we may limit time. Remarks are to be of general nature and are not to be specific or address a specific personnel issue. If somebody has an issue with personnel within the district, they should set up an appointment and speak with the superintendent. So far, I see no green cards, but if anybody would like to, like I said, the cards are up here and available. Moving on, one of the fun parts of our meetings, commendations and recognition. Let's see, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Broadwater and Mrs. Johnson.
You probably don't want to turn the meeting over.
Turn the mic over.
It'd be more fun. As always, we are pleased to present those students in the Forest Hills School District that have achieved the status of National Merit Finalist. Of the 16,000 students who made it to the semifinalist status and those that you've met at previous board meetings, 90% of those students do move forward in the program, as is the case for the students here in Forest Hills School District. I did want to mention, we have one student, Liam Grebert, who could not advance to finalist status because he is not a native-born American. He's from Australia, although he has done his whole high school education in the Forest Hills School District and is really quite proud of that, so I did want to mention him tonight. Okay, for Turpin, we have four, and I believe Mr. Broadwater's going to present seven young men and women this evening, so we'll begin that. And just for information purposes, beginning in March, about 8,000 of the 16,000 finalists will start receiving scholarship awards. We do hope that those awards are high in financial gain for their parents and the students who have worked so hard. And Dr. Jackson expressed our honor roll for the AP College Board, and these students certainly have helped get us on that honor roll for the last three or four years. So I'll start. Turpin would like to present Rachel Gredone, Stephen Leonis, Anna Moorhead, and Sophia Paul. I believe they are all here and their parents, if they'd like to come on up after Mr. Broadwater introduces his, and we'll recognize them all at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention, for this year, this is the largest group of National Merit Finalists Anderson High School has ever had. And this group in particular is just a tremendous group of young people. Our seven finalists are Emma Anderson, Lillian Bishop, Andrew Black, Thomas Wong, Joanna Lebke, Kent Mendoza, and Alexander Stringfellow. If the students and their families could come on up, that would be great.
They can line them up.
We would like to obviously ask the board to commend these students for their achievements, so, and there she is, for their achievement in the National Merit Scholarship and receiving finalist status.
While they're lining up, would you?
I am so pleased and proud to move that we commend the students from Anderson and Turpin High School for their National Merit finalist status.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Tepfer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Congratulations. And also, before they even move, I want to make sure, do we have all, are all the parents standing that are parents of these folks? These folks deserve congratulations, but you do also, because I suspect you did a little bit of work to get these folks to where they are today. So round of applause to everybody. You just bear good, what you need? Okay.
Students, before you go, congratulations. I would like you to have the honor of walking in, like we call it, and kind of walk down and proceed and give the congratulations of our board.
I'll start over here.
Start here. It's right there. You're first.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. That's really terrific.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Good job.
Congratulations. 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 Good job. Pretty cool.
That's always a special time in board meetings, we get to honor those that have really excelled in academics. Let's see, moving on to the next item on the agenda, public comments. I have no green cards. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, you need to get a green card immediately, otherwise, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, district updates from the superintendent. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we'd like to begin, I believe, with College Credit Plus, Brad Nid Chamberlain, our director, or, excuse me, our coordinator of secondary curriculum.
Well, I started out with a very fancy slide. That's the first Ohio revised code I've ever memorized. So this is College Credit Plus, and I will be quick, so if you have questions along the way, feel free to stop me. But we could be here for an hour if we wanted to talk about this, but I don't think we want to. So College Credit Plus is what we used to know as post-secondary education options and dual enrollment, where we would have a course at the high school and the student would also get college credit for it. Now, the state of Ohio has wrapped these into one initiative. It's called College Credit Plus. It's from the legislature, the state superintendent, the chancellor, the Board of Regents, and the governor. And it is their program for getting more students college-ready, college and career-ready by the time they graduate high school. So there are parts of the law that we have to adhere to. One is, and it was really the same for post-secondary, PSEO, is that we have to publicize the program, College Credit Plus, by March 1st. Well, we had our public meeting scheduled for last Tuesday, February 17th. Of course, we did not have that. We had to cancel that. We're going to have it tomorrow night at Nagel in the Cafeteria, and we've publicized that. We've put all the information out on the website, gotten a lot of questions. The interesting part of it is, PSEO, you used to just have to publicize to grades nine through 12. College Credit Plus, you have to publicize to grades six through 11, because the program is really for grades seven through 12. So in theory, 7th graders, 8th graders next year could take college-level courses and get high school and college credit. Now, we could spend a lot of time discussing whether or not there are many 7th graders who are college or career-ready at this time and developmentally ready to take a college course. There is also a public meeting with a participating IHEs. IHE, another acronym, Institutes of Higher Education. So all of our local colleges, and the ones we're really talking about are your Publix, Cincinnati, University of Cincinnati, and there's the three campuses, Main Campus, Blue Ash, and Claremont, Cincinnati State, Sinclair, and then the Miami Regionals. Xavier is also involved, though the rules for getting college credit or paying for college credit are a little different for the private schools, though they have to be involved as well. So the colleges don't have a choice to be involved in this either. And then, parents and students have to turn in an intent-to-enroll form. That doesn't mean they're enrolled anywhere, they just have to get it to us, to the college, to the school counselors by April 1st. So all of this publicity has to happen so that as many people in our public are as aware of this program as possible, and I think we've done a good job with that. I've never heard as much chatter about post-secondary as I have heard about College Credit Plus in the last month or so. If you could go on to the next slide. So another part of the law that we have to do is publish what are called pathways. And in our course guide this year, for the first time, we put in a pathway, which is basically an outline of the types of courses a student could take, and it's a sample for them to accrue 15 college credits or 30 college credits. And that does not necessarily mean 15 credits in one year or 30 credits in one year. Those are just, it's just a sample to show how they can get those credits. The University of Cincinnati is our main partner in this. We've had dual enrollment courses with them in the past. So they actually sent us probably eight or nine different pathways, engineering, business, health sciences, lots of different pathways. What we published was the generic sort of liberal arts pathway, but the counselors in the schools for Anderson, Nagel, and Turpin, they have these sample pathways in hand, because they're really supposed to be used for counseling the students. And part of this is to get students and counselors to work together to talk about college and career. What career are you interested in? Is there a pathway that would work for you? How does, how can College Credit Plus help you? So those, that is by law, had to be in our course guide. You can't, as a student, even if you started in 7th grade, you cannot accrue more than 120 college credits in this program. So you could, in theory, start 9th grade and get 30 credits each year and max out at 120, which is, I believe, what it takes to earn a college degree. So, so far, so good. But where the law has, I don't, well, I'll say overreached a bit, is they have made determinations about how these courses should be weighted and how they should accrue credit in the high schools. And that's different than PSEO. We had a lot more sort of local control with that. So they define advanced standing courses. What we give weight for at Turpin and Anderson High School are AP courses. And College Credit Plus, by law, has to get the same amount of weight and credit that AP courses get. Well, that's fine if the courses were the same, but where it gets sticky is there are college courses, let's, and I don't want to say, you know, let's say underwater basket weaving. That way, we don't, you know, hurt anybody's feelings. But that course does not, should not get the same weight as, let's say, AP physics. Much more difficult course, much more rigorous course, even at the high school level than that, than a course like that at the college level. So what that's done is, it's kind of spooked us a little bit, because we worry that some students might choose a less rigorous College Credit Plus course than a more rigorous advanced placement course in the high school. And that's a problem. We have put, obviously, Dr. Jackson just read about the honor roll for advanced placement program. We have put a lot of time and effort and resources to advanced placement, and College Credit Plus is a little worrisome, because we don't want it to undercut that program. So that's the weighting part of College Credit Plus. The other part is that three credits of a college course equals one high school course. Most of these are semester courses. So in theory, what could happen is, you as the student would go take a semester, let's say, English Composition course. It only takes you a semester. You get one credit and the same weight as the AP English Language course that we offer here in Forest Hills. So our students stay in the class for a year. If you go and take it at the college, it's a semester. And again, one of those points that gives us pause as a school district. So to be totally frank, we are moving as, not as slowly as possible, but slowly with this program, because we just don't know how everything will settle out. How many students will want to take advantage of this? How many won't? There's the idea that you could create a sort of false race for valedictorian. Students could access College Credit Plus, never in theory enter a Forest Hills school and be our valedictorian. Well, that would be a problem. So this is creating a lot of discussions, not just about College Credit Plus, but about how we do business academically in Forest Hills. If class rank is going to be impacted by this, then do we need to have a conversation about class rank and how that exists in our school district? So it's, as you all know, it's increasingly difficult to separate out one topic, solve it, make sense of it, and then move on. Everything seems to be interwoven in this day and age in education.
Brad?
Yes?
Conversations notwithstanding, what is our, not necessarily commitment, what are we expected to do as a school system?
What, everything that I've shown you so far is, and we've, I believe we've adhered to the spirit of the law. I think there's a lot of upside to this program. We have to make it known to our public. We're doing that. We have to make sure that they get counseling in the schools. We'll do that. We actually spent the afternoon with our, all of our counselors from all three secondary buildings, going through this program, fine-tooth comb, letting them push and ask as many questions as possible, make sure that we get the intent-to-enroll forms out. The timeline gets very compressed, though, because the universities have their own timelines. University of Cincinnati, for example, their deadline to enroll is April 15th. So a student has to come to the meeting, make, and look over the whole program, decide what they want to schedule, do an intent-to-enroll form, and then actually enroll in the university, all in a very short amount of time.
And take a college entrance exam.
If, that's right, because they have to be deemed college-ready.
Correct.
But theoretically, they would do that one time, right? Because after that, they would know what the timelines are.
Correct. Correct. They would, it would, it would work. Now, the other part of this is, when our students used to, when our students access post-secondary education, of course, we as a district paid for that. That comes out of our funding. But we also had dual-enrolled courses, where the students would take the high school course, but they would pay for the credits. And say they were taking our Engineering: Your Future class. It's a two-credit course. They would write the check for two credits. It was usually about $220, and they pay that to the University of Cincinnati. They accrue credit. Now with College Credit Plus, we pay for that as well. So we have dual-enrolled courses, and then the College Credit Plus courses on the campus, and we as a district pay for that, and we now pay for all the textbooks, and the IHEs waive the fees. So I know that Mr. Tepfer's been on a work group with this as well, with fellow treasurers. Logistically, how this will all work out, with a student enrolling in a course at the university, and then they don't even know exactly what their schedule will look like until August, and then they have to go buy books, and yet we are the ones to buy the books. Logistically, there's, I don't think any district has this planned yet, as to how this will all work.
And that student could get 120 credits, and we pay for all the credits and all the books.
Correct. Correct.
We still, although, offer, is it the two dual-credit courses that are on our campus?
Correct. We have Engineering: Your Future and Engineering Models. And we wanted to keep those courses, because we've developed those over a number of years. It is a solid partnership with the University of Cincinnati. They're not massive numbers, and, but we actually never gave them AP advanced standing weight. Now we need to, so we have to sort of beef up the rigor in those courses as well.
So in our district, we have probably a lot of kids that eventually would enjoy this option. What is our obligation to, how much of it do we have to offer? Is it, you're all in?
Dual enrollment, we can offer as much or as little as we would care to. So currently, what we have for dual enrollment courses, this year, we have pre-calculus and environmental science, personal finance, and Spanish IV, I believe. We are going to back away from all of those, because we may be able to offer dual enrollment and personal finance this year, but we do not believe it is as rigorous as an AP course. Environmental science is not. Pre-calculus isn't a degree-bearing course, even though our students could purchase elective credit, and, what was the last one? Spanish, they, basically, that was, it's a nice course to have, but if you complete Spanish IV at a high level, you'll end up testing out of the equivalent course anyway at the university level. So we are stepping back from those. Now, having said that, there's a lot to be gained by teachers who want to get credential to be certified to teach a dual-enrolled course. That's the other part of this, is that you have 18 credits that, in the graduate coursework, that a teacher needs to get credential to be adjunct. That's difficult to come by, because our, most of our teachers don't get a master's in their content area. So all of this together, it all rolled out this year, and there's just a lot of moving parts to it. So we're taking it slowly, and we're just, we're going to learn as we go with this program.
We still have the ability to determine fees for the dual-
We still have the ability to determine fees for the dual-credit courses or not?
No, we do not.
No.
Dual, school dual enrollment, not.
The engineering courses, I don't think ha-, somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they had fees in the first place.
Okay.
And it's forty, here's another part of the structure. If we do the dual enrollment here, it's $40 per credit hour. If you, if UC, for example, sends us an instructor and does it here, it's $80 a credit hour. If our students go to the campus, it's $160 per credit hour, which is still significantly less money than PSEO was. Still significantly reduced cost.
After you get the applications, will you come back to us and let us know how it's going?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We're, I'm curious, because it's one thing to say, I want to take that college course. It's another, as a parent, to, I mean, it's hard enough just to get them to soccer practice. Try getting them to a college campus 25, 30 minutes away on a regular basis, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation to the board is from Dr. Lauren Angelone and Natasha regarding a pilot program that we're working on this year through, called blended learning.
Yes. Thanks, Brad. First of all, I just want to kind of take us back to 2010. We started the BYOD initiative in our school district, supported by you guys, and pretty much since that time have been working to grow and expand it. And we're getting to the place where we're almost one-to-one throughout the entire district. And that has been, increasing access has been one of our number-one pursuits. But staying with that vision and that goal of just pursue, or increasing access would be equivalent to like having a car and then not equipping it with the right gasoline that we need to, so our, kind of our next phase is kind, is what I will refer to as blended learning. And it, it really represents how, right now, we have our secondary teachers coming together to study this topic because it is quite complex as we move forward and kind of vision how we want this to roll out in Forest Hills, as we look at opportunities that we've just never had available to us without technology in our hands. So, I've asked Dr. Lauren Angelone to come on up. She's been working with us all year to lead our secondary teachers through a process. She's had some experience with this in Oak Hills and brings a wealth of knowledge with her. And recently, we just presented a version of this presentation at the, at the OETC conference. And so, she, we're going to talk it through and then answer any of your questions.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Angelone, and I'm here to present on our blended learning initiative. Tonight, I want to talk to you about, give you a little bit of background on blended learning, and then I want to tell you the results of a research, some research that we did. And I also want to share with you what we've been working on with teachers. Let's stay on this slide. So, first, I want to share the definition of blended learning. It has three parts. It's, number one, learning that takes place partly online, and students need to have control over either the time, place, path, or pace of learning. So, student control is really important in that part of the definition. Two, it also takes part, place partly in a formal educational setting. And three, there's an integration between those two parts. So, for us, we're most concerned about offering personalization, offering pedagogies that teach to individual students. Go ahead, next slide. And why blended learning? We're having kind of a moment in Ohio for blended learning. SB 316 passed in 2012. And in that bill, operating standards are required to be written surrounding blended learning. So, this is something that's about to be approved by ODE. It hasn't been yet. I keep watching the website and waiting, but it's not quite approved yet. But it is coming, and this is something that Forest Hills will need to be thinking about. In addition, there's an Ohio Blended Learning Network, which is a group of about 20 schools, public schools and charter schools, that are, some are just learning about blended learning, some are fully integrated. They're using their resources to share and to understand, you know, how it can improve our educational landscape. In addition, the Horizon Report, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but it's put out every year by the New Media Consortium, and their interest is in how we can use emerging technologies to best, or best in the educational environment. And for the first time in 2014, hybrid or blended learning, they're used synonymously in the Horizon Report, was mentioned for the first time. So, it's on the mid-range, which means in about three to five years, they expect it to be fully integrated into schools. And the reasons that the Horizon Report gives for blended learning, you know, taking hold in the educational environment is, number one, personalization; two, engagement; and three, extended time. And this is supported in the research literature that when face-to-face instruction, purely face-to-face, is compared to online, and is also compared to blended, online actually does slightly better than face-to-face, and blended does slightly better than online. And they believe that this is because of the extended time. Students have access to the materials all the time. They spend a little bit more time at home. And so, for us, we're interested in how technology can allow for flexibility in time, space, learning method, and how we can really address the needs of the 21st century learner and the needs that they have as they leave Forest Hills.
Before you go on, can I ask a question, or you would rather have?
That's fine.
ODE part of it.
Yeah.
You said they're going to give guidelines or something that comes out on their website. Is that something that will mandate how it's done or mandate that it be done?
Mandate how it's done.
Okay, good. When I hear that, it's like, I'm from the government, and I'm here to help. Usually, that's not help, so.
No, no.
Yeah. The focus that's different that we're not maybe using is the whole idea of the mastery learning. So, it's, it's not, it's less about seat time in a class and getting those Carnegie units, and more about mastery of content over time and showing that proficiency as a student.
Thank you.
Okay. So, to begin the work of blended learning, we wanted to take a measured approach. We started with some research. We're working on visioning, which Natasha's going to talk about at the end, and we also have been working with a small group of teachers to implement and to utilize what's already being implemented, what teachers are just doing on their own. So, I want to start by talking about the research. What we first did is we sent out a survey to key stakeholders in the districts, administrators, parents, students, and teachers at the middle and high school level. We had nearly 2,000 responses. I was also able to go into the classrooms and do some observations, and then conduct some interviews with parents, teachers, and students after the survey results were back in. This is a horrible slide, but you do have access to it in the white paper. There's a white paper that goes along with this presentation. And what this is showing, basically, I want to give you kind of a broad overview. These are the questions on the left, the quantitative questions on the left that are Likert-style questions, so, you know, they range from how often do you use technology in your personal and professional life, to how receptive are you to giving students more control of their learning. And I made this into a heat map, so the green responses are the higher, more positive responses, and the red responses the lower. And just giving a quick overview of the data, you can see that parents and students and teachers in the high school setting are kind of the most skeptical and unsure about these uses of technology. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And there's some other observations that we had in the quantitative data. Students are the least familiar with the concept of blended learning. Overall, participants are confident in the promise and, of technology and receptive to students' control of learning, but teachers and students in 912, again, are the least confident. Teachers in 912 and parents are the least clear about our vision for technology in the district. Most do not think students will engage in blended learning outside of school, although we've seen the opposite happen, actually, in our classes that are experimenting with it now. You should have seen what was going on, on our snow days. There was a lot of work going on with those classrooms, which was interesting to see, or cold days, or whatever they were. And finally, all groups recorded high usage of technology. So, parents, administrators, teachers, all were using technology, both in their personal and professional life, but actually, students in 912 are using it the least in their work life, which is the classroom. And they also had the biggest discrepancy between work and personal, which, you know, is a chance for us to meet students where they are. When I had the chance to go into classrooms and observe their learning spaces, pretty much, if you close your eyes and think of a classroom, think of a classroom from, you know, when you were growing up, it was pretty much looking the same. There was a projector as the main source of technology instead of a blackboard, but still, students were generally in rows, some in groups, but mostly in rows, looking at the teacher, and the teacher is going through the material at the same pace for all students. So, we see this as an opportunity to not only rethink pedagogy, but rethink the space of the classroom. How can we use the space to de-center the instruction, to not have it be all about what's going on up front, but to personalize it for individual student needs? And we, I'll talk more about that a little bit later. We talked about our proposals. Now, in the survey, there were also open-ended questions, and so, I took a look at many, many, many responses. And what emerged from the data were some misperceptions about blended learning that our community has. First is that it's, we're going to lose teachers as a result of it. All stakeholders are nervous about this. Students are very nervous about this. Teachers are very nervous about this, obviously, and parents. And to me, this means that education needs to be done about what it really is. Blended is conflated with online learning, so whenever I asked questions about blended learning, it was assumed that students were on computers all the time, and it was purely online. And another misperception is that students are progressive and that they're ready and they're wanting to learn online in this way. And students are using technology the most, but they're using it for entertainment and socialization, and so, they're going to need to understand how to use it to learn as well. They're not as comfortable. They've been schooled, especially high school students, it seems this way. They've been schooled this way from K to nine, and when they get to high school, that doesn't mean they're necessarily ready to jump in because they don't understand how it works. Another two themes that popped up over and over again were personalization and motivation. These are seen as both benefits and challenges, each of them. So, personalization is seen by the majority as the greatest reason to utilize technology to enhance the learning process, but it's also seen as a challenge, especially by teachers who are overwhelmed at the thought of, you know, creating a lesson plan for each of their 30 students, which is not what it means, but that's sort of the sense that they get. It's also assumed that students will be motivated by using technology, but it's not assumed that they'll be motivated by having lots of control over their own learning. When I asked key stakeholders what they could imagine a school district, a quality public school district looking like in 10 to 20 years, more than half talked about technology. They see it as an inevitability. There's a small vocal minority on either side being really excited or really opposed to too much technology. 20% talked about tradition, wanting to keep tradition part of schools, you know, still wanting to have those student-student interactions, the extracurricular activities, you know, high school sports, all of the things that go along with having an actual physical building. And 10% of survey participants thought that the future of schooling should include more flexibility and personalization, which obviously is something that technology can allow. So, in order to support what we've learned from our research, and also to learn more about what was going on in schools already, we've worked with a small group of teachers. Some teachers were already on their own blending their instruction. They were using the flipped model of instruction. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but they record their lectures, students watch them at night, and then during the class period, they can get to work on kind of homework-type of activity, and teachers can be there to support them. And we also worked with a group of teachers that were just interested in learning more about it. What we did was we studied models of blended learning. We met through Google Hangout, teachers from New York City and Montana and Alaska that were already blending so that we could kind of understand what a real classroom looks like, because it's difficult to find public, good public school examples. There's lots of charter school examples because charters can kind of, they start with a clean slate, and they can just start using blended instruction. And so, we worked with teachers to really read, understand, talk to other people that were blending. And then teachers decided to work on a proposal that outlined how they were blending in their classrooms. So, we had a group of about 10 teachers that wrote proposals that detailed their blended instruction, and we're working to kind of develop those models a little bit more and to share them. So, in addition to the proposal detailing the blended instruction, Christina and Natasha also added on sort of a classroom redesign incentive. So, if teachers added on to their proposal how they'd like to redesign their classrooms, this is where we're talking about classes being all in rows, one teacher would be selected from Anderson and one from Turpin to have their classroom redesigned. And this would serve a couple of purposes. One, it's an incentive for teachers kind of rethink instruction towards more personalization, but it'll also serve in the following years as a place where other teachers can come and observe it happening, perhaps administrators, parents. So, it'll be a place of education for the community as well. And so, our Forest Hills models, the ones that have been shaking out from these classroom proposals, basically fall into four general categories. One are, there's some purely online courses, and how is that blending? Well, that's blending because it, students will take some classes face-to-face, and they'll take some classes online. It's called a self-blend model. There's a 401 model. Couple teachers are experiencing, are experimenting with four days of face-to-face instruction, one day of online, to see what they can do with that flexible day. There are blended courses, which are both the flipped model that I discussed, and also, there's a couple of math teachers working together using an Apex curriculum, which is a completely online curriculum. Students are walking through that in their classroom, and these two teachers are there to support, pull out for small group instruction, reteach as needed. And then there's what I'm calling traditional blended. So, they're working within the traditional school day. They're not changing the schedule at all. Usually, they're just blending one part. For example, vocabulary in English is taking place in a program called Membean, and then the rest of the time, the teacher is teaching in a more traditional way. Natasha's going to talk a little bit about vision.
What our intention really is, is just to experiment with these teachers, with the students, making sure that we're researching along the way, getting feedback from the students, what's working, what's not, because this takes a whole effort with the, the administrators to rethink schedule, to rethink how, how the classrooms are organized. And we just want to do it in a very thoughtful way because, as you can imagine, just like when the new standards came out, every product on the market has a sticker on it that says blended or personalized or something. And so, we're wanting to make sure that we go slowly and vet exactly how we want this to work because in some school districts, they're taking the steps of teacher creating all these materials and paying, paying teachers to do that. In other school districts, they're purchasing online materials, and so, we just really want to explore all the options and find out what's best for Forest Hills as we, as we really pursue personalizing the education for students and taking advantage of opportunities that we've never had before.
Here's what I don't understand. Do you have like normal, normal isn't traditional, I guess, traditionally named courses, but you do blended learning within the course itself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. It's not like a made-up new course because of, there's just, and there's, the teachers were really selective. They've been incredible, actually, in diving in and being risk-takers in this era of education where everything is, there's so much pressure. So, we've been very proud of that. But it, it's not changing the course. It's just them raising their hand, saying, I'm willing to, to pilot and get, and try this for the next school year. And, and as part of the communication process that, that the administrators and the teachers will be doing with it, with the parents and students as we go into scheduling, is to be very clear about which ones are and which ones aren't.
And I, I think this is all great, and I think maybe in some respects, we're a little ahead of ourselves in, in, in technology. I know there were a number of high school seniors this year that sort of at the last minute in the summer had some schedule, scheduling difficulty, so they had to take online courses. It was either you take the college prep econ course, or you take AP macro or micro, I forget what it is, on your own. But there was no readily available support system. I mean, you were on your, some of these kids are on, were on their own until they worked it out. So, I'm glad you're doing this, is what I'm saying, because you're, you're getting, you're catching up with, with some of the stuff that's already happening.
And we do see a continuum, and, and I don't know if you can make the connection with the things that Brad shared today. I mean, there is this process of, you know, go on to college to like, these are the incremental steps that can help get you to that more open environment, more flexible, that we can monitor and, and have structure, or we can open up to the students based on where they are.
This, this is huge. I know over the past two, three, four years, we've had a lot of discussion about 20, what 21st century learning is. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this, you are really articulating and bringing to life, this is the 21st century learning. And I know in the last couple of months, we've had a lot of discussion, for example, within, about facilities. And you brought it up here about adjusting our classrooms and adjusting our, our facilities to accommodate this type of learning model. And so, we'll be implementing that over the next three and a half years.
Well, we just want to make sure we have a lot of teacher buy-in and understanding of it because we don't want to just, you know, buy new equipment, buy new furniture and say, hey, now you're a 21st century teacher. We want to make sure that the learning goes along with it, the teachers are comfortable, and the things that are appropriate for each content area are used. Because as she, as she mentioned, in the research, it came out very clearly that people think we just want to make teachers disappear. And that is so far from the truth because a highly skilled teacher is more important in this kind of environment than ever. And, and so, we have to be equipping teachers to, to take on this new challenge.
I've seen some of the data from other districts around the state where they've done like, for example, flipped classroom and the benefit that that provides. Let me go back to some of the data you've shared, the survey here. The, the third bullet point where you talked about the current high school seniors were not, I don't have the, were not comfortable. And my question is, is that because, yes, they're digital natives, but they were not digital education natives?
Right.
We didn't start the tablet program in Forest Hills until 2006.
Well, and the, the juniors are the kids who at Nagel were in the first round. So, they got the very early like BYOD experience, and it was a, you know, it was a small pocket. And so, the seniors didn't have that experience at all. So, you see a difference if you were, if you're analyzing the data and looking at it, you see a difference between the seventh graders currently, eighth graders, then you get a little bit more ninth, a little bit, you know, a little less 10.
I'm all about the data, but I also want to make sure that we're understanding what I'm all about the data, but I also want to make sure that we're understanding what the data is really telling us.
Yeah. And that's definitely a factor.
There were a couple of high school seniors that I talked to that said exactly that. We missed the tablet program.
I mean, we went from zero to sixty, because tablet, that was just the teachers. That wasn't even the students.
Right. Right.
You want to add anything to this?
Well, actually, in our discussions, I'm gonna talk about in just a couple of minutes, our facilities discussions, these are some of the same things that we're talking about, decentralizing the classroom and looking at, you know, and again, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get to that point, but not having that focal place of always having a front of a classroom, that you can equip a classroom so that there are many different learning spaces in the classroom, that you can have small group instruction going on and those types of things. And it does involve technology. It does involve furniture, as is said. And that's just the very basics of what we're doing. But we're beginning at that level now as well with our facilities discussion. What Lauren and Natasha have been talking about even for next year of equipping one classroom, where we're looking at equipping more than one classroom across the district with some of this different technologies as well as different furnishings for some of these teachers.
Yeah, we don't, this is the only chance we get to talk about these type of things, but I just, this is huge, bigger than people I think realize. And I just applaud and personally support what you're doing. And I hope we're supplying the resources as best as we can to continue, you know, the work you're doing. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I see this as a natural progression, you know, having elementary students and seeing what they do incorporating. I mean, for them, the computer is an integral part of their learning experience. So, as they get up into high school now, I think it's a natural progression on where we're going.
And we have Carrie Herod working with the elementary specifically, doing similar kind of work on that end. Susan, there's another slide that just talks a little bit about our lessons and next steps that we can kind of wrap up here. Because it definitely will continue to expand.
So, our lessons overall is that this takes a culture shift. So, this is, you know, we have a long history and tradition, as do most public schools. And it's gonna take some education to explain and to allow each of the key stakeholders to really understand what blended learning looks like in practice, and that it's not just the robots or the computers taking over and leaving our humanity behind. We also need more public school examples. In the literature, there aren't very many, and so this is kind of a chance also for Forest Hills to be leaders in this area. And as Natasha discussed, we've run into this, not problem, but it's complex whether to decide to purchase content, to have teachers create it, or to curate and do kind of a combination of created, purchased, but also some free materials. But each teacher that's working on, that's trying out blended learning in their classroom right now is doing it in a slightly different way, so that'll give us some more data on that. Next steps, ongoing research. We're gonna keep a close eye on the teachers that are working on blended learning. We're gonna give the survey again, maybe at the end of next year, maybe a little bit later than that, to see how perceptions have changed. We're also planning to share these models. So, I've boiled down the teachers' proposals into a website. And so, so far, I only have one teacher on the website. But the website will be a place where we can share what blended learning looks like in practice with parents, with other teachers to get them on board, to get more interested, with students, and potentially in the future with other districts and the larger school community. We're also working on something I think is kind of exciting that is called a massive collaboratively-designed course, which may be an answer to the purchase-create-curate problem, which means you get a group of teachers together to design one course. And so, it takes the load off of an individual teacher to design their course, but it also, you know, uses the wisdom of the crowd. More eyes on it, make it to be a better course. So, right now, we're testing that out. It's not massive. It only has three teachers per course right now. But there are two from Anderson and one from Turpin, so we have kind of a community effort there. And so, we'll be keeping an eye on that. And then we'll be looking towards the 2015, 2016 implementation. Of course, these are all pilots. They're all relatively small, but we're gonna keep a close eye on them to see which ones are scalable. And then we're working to finalize the vision. So, I think we're just really looking forward to spending more time understanding blended learning and what it can look like at Forest Hills and how we can be leaders in innovative pedagogies. So, happy to take any more questions.
Thank you. Doc, do you have anything else? Any other questions? Go ahead.
No, I'm fine. I'm just saying what's frustrating for me, and I think it is for all of us, is the fact that this is the direction that we should be leaning, and we're working and we're trying our very best. And then what you see, that we deal on a daily basis of the more mandates, the more law, the more legislation, those types of things, just like Brad's presentation right before, this was all legislative. And I could have easily picked out every piece that he said in regards to the effect that it has on us and our teachers and our students. And that's what's frustrating, is that we're a very high-performing district, and yet we have to find time, we have to create time in an area, in a time in our, in public education, that that time is just not there. There are just so many other requirements and things that are placed upon our staff, our teachers, that it's, this is what's frustrating for me. With that said, I applaud what we're doing. We are taking our time. We're gonna move it a little bit at a measured pace. And I know great things will come, but it just takes a little bit of time. And it's probably one of the great reasons why there's no public schools or very few public school examples out there.
I'm sure.
Well, like I said, I think on behalf of the board, we absolutely support what you're doing. I would also encourage you to focus on some of the parent education piece of it. When I saw your, what you call a stoplight chart, a Christmas tree chart, whatever, to see how many of the teachers and parents who didn't understand. And I think once they understand, people will be much more enthusiastic supporters of this anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Angeloni.
Next item under the superintendent's report?
Okay, Susan, we have eight seconds, right? What I did, I'm gonna be very brief to the board. I think most of the board realizes what's going on with our facilities, but I do want to give that facilities instruction update on a monthly basis. And so, what we have here is just, I wanted to just kind of recap some of the things that's happened in this month of February, even with the weather, even with the shorter month, and we're not even through it yet. But if we're gonna look at some of the tasks that we've completed or in the process of completing this month, well, it started off early in the month with our bond sale, and which we talked about at our last meeting, it happened in early February. We most recently received bond funding on February 18th. The bond funding, and we got that money invested, thanks to Rick and the work that he's done and with our partners investing the monies. And some of those monies are invested. Some of it are on a draw scale, those types of things, so as we continue. We've continued with our building meetings, which has been very important with our administrators and our teachers. We've completed a second round of visioning meetings. This month, we also contracted with Zimmer Company as our Forest Hills School District Owner's rep. He has brought a lot of great leadership thus far already to our projects. And then also, we have already, as Ray has talked about, and we'll talk a little bit about today, have put some initial elements out there for some select summer projects already out to bid. And will be some more coming right down the pipe very quickly. What's some of the upcoming tasks that we still are working on? Of course, we're continuing that schematic design work. The projects are beginning to take shape. Now that we've met with our building district teams, we will, our building teams, we're now going to be breaking it down into some smaller group meetings. So, we're gonna begin meeting with some examples, like some kindergarten staff, to talk about the kindergarten community and what those classrooms will look like. Our primary, intermediate as well, just as Natasha and Dr. Angeloni were talking about, some of those, you know, decentralized instructional places, and how do we begin to have that even at the elementary level. Again, talking about some of the other departments such as the arts and the different subject areas of the high schools, those meetings as well. Coming up, beginning tomorrow evening, we're beginning to have our community meetings. We want to involve the community, especially on what's happening at each of these meetings and their individual meetings for each building. We'll be talking about where we are as far as the design process is going, what we're doing primarily on the inside of those buildings. But we want our community's input is what the outside of our buildings are also going to entail, because that's what is gonna be very important to our community in that regard as well. So, with that, again, we have been communicating and we're continuing to work on different ways of communicating. And you can see here some of the things that we have done and will be doing. Some of the different, you can see where we've, you know, had information in the Inquirer and the Journal. We did press releases, and we're looking at Cincinnati.com. We had some information in our PTO newsletters, on our school marquees, and so on and so forth. So, finding more and more ways to communicate with our community with the great things that are going on in our facilities. So, that's kind of a quick update. Sorry that, if you have any questions, I'll be more happy to take some.
So, we get reports each week as to what's going on specifically. Is there a place where the community can see what some of those projects are that may be planned for, you know, the spring or this summer or that type of thing? A simple place for them to see?
Every organization is a regular weekly update, and those are all online.
Okay.
And as we begin to get more specific, and especially when we get to the drawing phases and that we can begin to show some of the specific schematic design, those will all be online.
I've had a chance to attend, I think, all of the meetings we've had with the administrators, the faculty in the buildings. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that even in the more difficult, challenging schools, Summit, and of course, Anderson, Turpin have got their challenges, but I felt like that the faculty, almost universally, was very pleased with the process and what the opportunities looked like. And we won't have answers for everything yet, but at least that most, if not all, the concerns, issues that were raised, solutions were being presented to be able to deal with those, which, and I know there was some skepticism, you know, as we approached this project, as to whether we'd be able to do that, whether people, especially the teachers and faculty, would have their needs met. And so, I think this is very positive. The other thing I would say is I would encourage everyone, if you've got an interest in this, the public, the meeting dates, well, they were listed up here, and I'm sure they're online.
And they're online.
But if you have got input and interest, a concern, that's your chance. Show up at those meetings. They are listening. People are paying attention to the input that's being provided. And, you know, participate in the project. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is another, it's kind of an offbeat, but I still get people every once in a while that'll come up to me and say, "Wow, your own architect says that money can't pay for what you said." So, how do we dispel that? Because that architect's never said that in any meeting I've ever been in.
I think you're gonna hear that in almost everything, whether it's facilities, whether it's curriculum, whether it's how to call a school day due to weather. Everybody has their opinion. And no, right now, everything, and we do have a budget for each building, those budgets are very strictly looked at in that regard, and we're not promising things that we won't be able to deliver.
Right.
I think until we actually have drawings, it's not gonna be clear. I mean, it's still in the sort of concept phase, in my opinion. And I think even at the community meetings, it's still gonna be in the concept phase. Until there are actual drawings, pen to paper, people see what's gonna happen. It's, now's the time for input still.
Right. And actually, we will be showing some drawings at those community meetings of some of the projects. Now, they won't be, you know, the color of the brick and those kinds of things that we'll be doing, but it would be basically some of those conceptual drawings are out there now.
Yeah, I think that's actually part of the process, is the fact that the input is being used to develop the plans. If they had the plans done, that would say that they weren't really paying attention to the community input. So, I think this is all positive. Any other questions on the facilities or anything else for the superintendent? Moving on, a board discussion. We don't have a topic for board discussion. I did want to simply report that the board did have a work session a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday. And just a little bit, process for board meetings. Typically, board meetings, whether it's a for-profit, non-for-profit, or even a high-performing education board, work isn't usually done at a board meeting. It's affirmed at a meeting, it's reviewed at a meeting, it's approved at a meeting. These work sessions are one of the few times when the board gets to really roll up our sleeves and have some discussion about what are key issues for the school district. We did take quite a bit of time and went into some depth on our priorities for next year. And I want to thank Mrs. Carnahan for scribing, and Mrs. Bissinger, you've already, we've got a draft here. And maybe at the next meeting, we'll be able to have some discussion and zero in of what our top five priorities are. We covered quite a spectrum, and it was thoughtful, and I thank everyone for their input. Does anybody have anything else for a board discussion? Seeing nothing, we will move on to student services. And I will say that the next item is nine point one through thirteen point one will be taken as a consent agenda, unless there's objection. Seeing no objection, we will take those as consent items. And let's start out with nine point one, district calendar. Who is presenting? Mr. Reddick?
Yes, this evening, we're asking for the final approval of the fifteen sixteen calendar. The calendar was uploaded into your board docs. There is one unique thing with it. We are adding a actual, a day. Due to change of conferences at the high school level, there will be an actual extra day of instruction for our students.
So, we move to one seventy-seven?
It will be moved to one seventy-eight.
Okay.
Moved to one seventy-eight. So, as the high school administration was really wanting to get the extra instructional day in and use the time more wisely with their teachers.
Is that something we will keep in the calendar then, or will we lose that at some point?
It is also in our next year's calendar as well. The proposal was on the draft today.
We're down on two conference lines at all.
Terrific.
Any other?
Thank you.
Moving on, nine point two. Let's see, student services, and Mrs. Ryan is presenting.
All right. Student Services has items nine point two to nine point nine. Seven of them are trips, overnight trips, and they were not in any particular order. We submitted them in the order that they came in, so I'm gonna try to make sense of them. Nine point two and nine point eight is Anderson High School and Turpin High School Teaching Professions Academy. They are going on March twelfth and thirteenth to Ohio Dominican University in Columbus to the Future Educators Association State Conference. Nine point four is our Turpin High School Drama Club, going on March twenty-seventh through March twenty-ninth to Columbus to their international conference. Nine point seven, Anderson High School's Marketing and Deca, is going on March the thirteenth and fourteenth to Columbus to their state championship or competition. And then nine point five and six, we have Anderson and Turpin Swim Team going on February twenty-seventh to March first. The Anderson Dive Team, they will be going up a day ahead of time because they have some divers competing in Canton at the state swim and dive championship. And finally, for the overnight trips, we have the Anderson and Turpin Future Business Leaders of America going to Mansfield for their state competition. The information related to costs, dates, numbers of students attending, and transportation is all included in the items. As you can see, the costs are reduced due to clubs and organizational funding. Item nine point three includes our attached agreement with Hamilton County DDS, which is the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services for school year two thousand fifteen and sixteen. They provide special education services to our district students with very intensive needs. And that school is located at Bobby Fairfax School. And this cost has increased by five thousand dollars. They will not be providing transportation to school districts, although when we do send our students to this facility, we provide that transportation. And at this time, we do not have any students attending Bobby Fairfax School. So, attached is the DDS resolution, procedures for their district hired aides, and the agreement.
Before you leave, does anybody have any questions about any of the trips? What it says, district transportation, what exactly does that mean? Yellow buses or?
Special transportation is included on all of the student, on these students' IEPs. They need adapted transportation options.
Excuse me, I was talking about the trips.
Yes, yellow buses.
For the overnight trips?
Yep.
Those are included. Do you want me to go through where each?
No, just, I just.
They are all included, yes. Great Oaks, I believe, are providing three of these trips. Parents are providing two for the swim team and district transportation for the others.
Then on the contract, you said we don't have any students. So, help me understand then, are we paying by student and therefore it's zero?
We are paying by student, and it's thirty-five thousand dollars a year, according to that contract. At this time, we do not have any students attending. We serve all of our students in-house.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, Mrs. Adams?
The first several items are new courses that we're gonna be offering in the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, and they're gonna be on, on display in the central office for the next month so that they can be approved at the next board meeting. So, we're happy to announce that Mandarin Two will take place next school year. We just got that approval. We also have Concert Treble, which is a new course for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, a technology internship that we want to offer, as well as what Brad spoke with you earlier about, the College Credit Plus sample pathways and courses. They'll be part of our school year offering next year.
Is the Mandarin course being taught by?
Is the Mandarin course being taught by our current Mandarin teacher?
Yes, they have.
Yes. And at some point, they're going to go home, right?
Well, we're hoping, it gives us, we have the chance to expand it, and then they have committed for another year.
Right.
And Brad, I don't know if you want to speak into any specifics about that.
I guess, I wonder what happens if, you know.
We saw the partnership, so we could get other teachers.
We can continue with the college board, though ostensibly, the goal of the college board is that we have our own program beyond their financial support. I think we could probably get another round of guest teachers, but at some point, they will say, all right, you've, it's time to.
You have to be self-sustaining.
Why is it wrong? Yes.
And although it is very beneficial from the college board for the help, we are, the biggest expenses still ours for that, and that definitely, our goal is to make sure this program thrives and to find other teachers that can also, if and when that time comes, that we'll be able to hire our own Mandarin staff.
But we're good for next year.
One of our former board members, Winnie Clayton, was very big on expanding our foreign language opportunities, so she would be proud.
She would be happy, yes. Item 10.5, our summer school dates and fees for 2015, and so we recommend that you approve these dates and fees for elementary, middle, and high school classes that we're going to offer this summer. And we have some new materials on display in central office until next month, when you can vote them, for them. It's the new adoptions of English Language Arts K6. You'll notice there are several new pieces from Scholastic that will address reading comprehension in grades K6. And so, these are much awaited on resources that the teachers have been anxious to have.
And we'll be approving those next month after people have had a chance to look at them.
Yes, you will. Yeah, formal adoption will be on March 23rd.
Any other questions on any of the topics? The technology internship, where are they actually interning?
They're interning, actually, within Forest Hills. Our Ford Edge staff works with them inside of our Learning Commons in each of the high schools, and they can actually start this program in the middle school, start getting kind of low-level tech support training, and so they help serve our school district.
And the ACT and SAT prep classes, it looks like those are the summer. I'm just wondering how those differ from what the foundation has been considering. Is this something we've just offered as a school district for fee?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly when it started, because this happened before I took this position. Peggy, do you remember a specific time this started, the ACT and SAT in the summer?
That the district is doing?
It complements the program.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember, but I don't know exactly when it started, so.
It's longer, it's a more intense class than what we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
Thank you. Moving on, human resources. Mrs. Carnahan?
Item 11.1, the human resources report. Item A would be retirement. Items B and C are resignations. Item D is a leave of absence. Item E, you see several changes of assignment. Item F, a change of salary. Moving on, item H would be appointments, and all of these individuals have completed their probationary period and are now moving into a regular contract. Continuing on, classified staff, bus monitors. Item I, we see several special services appointment. Item J, and you will see, these are our coaches and consultants and advisors, and you will see page four are all of those individuals. On page five, we, on item K, we do have our substitute personnel, and I will do my normal monthly commercial. We are always looking for substitutes. If you have an interest in being a substitute, call the HR office. Item L is an agreement to place a certified staff member with the University of Cincinnati, and I will tell you that the agreement that you have in board docs was vetted by legal counsel. It's really just a great partnership opportunity for us with UC, and also the National Science Foundation. And then the other thing is, I wanted to just give a shout out to the FHTA, because they've been working very collaboratively with us for this very unique opportunity for one of our teachers, Jeff Rodriguez, to work with us at Anderson High School. He's going to also help us provide some professional development, and then he will be an instructor at UC next year. Item M, job descriptions. You see, you have two of those, Payroll Specialist 1 and Payroll Specialist 2, and an FTE report since the last meeting. You do have, we did have a .5 FTE increase. That's based on the needs of a student, and this will be in place for the remainder of this school year. And it does mean our FTE now stands at 780.26 FTE.
I just want to say, congratulations to Mr. Rodriguez and the Teachers Association for the opportunity. He is one amazing teacher. Both our children had him, and he's an amazing human being as well. It's great.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report. Moving on, business operations. Mr. Johnson?
I have several items for you this evening. The first is a change order for Anderson High School. This is the replacement of the underground piping that we did over the winter break. We had, you know, basically, two items. One is, we had an insurance item for Wolford Plumbing that we need to reimburse them on, and Blau Mechanical is to insulate the piping. So, the treasurer recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Wolford Plumbing in the amount of $102, and Blau Mechanical in the amount of $1,518. The next item is a direct energy natural gas contract. Over the course of the last several weeks, we've seen some significant drops in the price of natural gas. We had the opportunity to convert our variable rate contract to a fixed rate contract. So, we were actually able to negotiate two separate rates. One is a significantly lesser rate for the course of our remaining contract, which expires at the end of October of this year, and then we were also able to lock in a rate for 24 months beyond that. So, the treasurer recommends the board approve the attached agreement with direct energy retroactive to February 6th for our natural gas supply for the period of November 1st, 2015, through October 31st, 2017. The next is, we had the bid opening for the gymnasium air conditioning at Air Elementary on February 16th. By Ohio Revised Code, if the bid, if a bid exceeds 110% of the budget, we must reject the bid. All the bids exceeded 110% of the budget, so we have to reject all those. And there's a resolution to that effect that's included here. We already are making plans. We will be re-advertising for this project, I believe, in Thursday's paper this week, and we'll be bringing the new bids to the board meeting on March 23rd. So, the treasurer recommends that the board adopt the attached resolution as presented. Next item, at the same bid opening on February 16th, we opened bids for the replacement of field lighting at Anderson High School and Turpin High School. The complete bid tabulation recommendation is shown in the attachment. The treasurer recommends the board award the contract to the lowest bidder, as shown in the attachment.
Hey, Ray, would you speak to, just so, some of these items are bond issue funded, and some are permanent improvement fund. I think it's important to.
Yeah, this is a permanent improvement. This is not a bond issue funded item here.
Something that was planned for many years, is this targeted date.
Right. The next one, 12.5, is actually a blending of PI and bond. We opened bids on February 16th for the partial roof replacement at Air Elementary. We're planning on, with the PI fund, replacing the roof over the gymnasium. With the air conditioning of air, the air building, where the structural steel sits, we, that was an area that roofing needed to be replaced as well, so we're doing that, as well as the area over the office with bond money. So, the bids were open, and the bid tabulations are included, and the treasurer recommends the board award the contract to the low bidder, as shown in the attachment. Item 12.6 is 100% bond project. This is the pre-purchase, the replacement chiller at Nagle Middle School. Bids were opened again on Monday, February 16th. Monday, February 16th was a very busy day for many reasons. For the pre-purchase, the replacement chiller equipment, complete bid tabulation recommendation is shown in the attachment. Last but not least is the pre-purchase of the replacement boiler for Nagle Middle School. Again, same day, February 16th, bids were open in red. For the pre-purchase, the complete bid tabulation recommendation is shown in the attachment. Treasurer recommends the board award the contract to the low bidder, as shown in the attachment. We are also going to be advertising on Thursday for the installation of this equipment. We're bidding that separately. We'll bring those recommendations to the board at the May, or March 23rd meeting. And I might also note that what we did on both of these pieces of equipment is similar to what we did when we replaced the chiller at Turpin High School, is we looked at a 20-year cost. So, we took into consideration energy costs, energy efficiency, Duke rebates, and we were also able to get firm commitments on maintenance agreements in present-day dollars that were significantly low for 20 years. So, that's all factored into the equation in how we made the recommendation. It's not just simply the upfront price of the equipment.
Ray, the, there, I haven't seen the recent drawings in there. I think there may be some. I did not go to Air or Sherwood's second meetings, but there was a feeling that there would be a new entryway, and if you are redoing the roof over the office now, that won't be affected if there's a new configuration in the front?
That roof would be a part, that, the roof over that addition, as well as the new classrooms that are added, would be part of that construction. That's all new construction. This is over existing, so that would be, if you will, jutting out in the front of the building.
A new roof, yeah, got it, thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a question on the, when you say, or the contract to the low bidder, you know, one of them, it looks like that the, there's two bids. One's a higher bid, but it includes everything that you asked for.
Correct. Yeah, the one bid was really not responsive. The fact that we asked for, the bid required them to submit maintenance work over the course of the 20 years, and it just, those pages were just blank. They didn't, did not include that.
Okay.
So, the other did, plus also, there was analysis done as far as the energy cost goes, and the energy cost, the one we're awarding the bid to, is significantly better.
Any other questions? I just want to compliment you and your office. You blew through a lot of these things, but there's a lot of work that goes into making sure that what we're doing is the most efficient. I think a lot of times, people think of government, maybe, as not being efficient, and the work that you guys put into making, timing things out, getting all the rebates, everything else that goes along with it.
Randy, there's, I appreciate that, but there's a lot of people involved in that, so.
Well, I don't doubt that, but I'm just saying, I appreciate what, like I said, you and your department did.
I'll pass long appreciation. Thank you.
Also, Ray, there are a lot of mothers and others who take pictures at the stadiums who will certainly appreciate adequate lighting.
Yeah, I had two athletic directors that said that they were not going to really talk about this much until after tonight's meeting, to when it was officially brought to the board, so.
Yeah.
Because we, I mean, honestly, in fact, you know, quick story, we struggled with the stadium lighting, because I talked to a couple of vendors to get estimates on pricing, and about six weeks ago, we had one of them come out, and we found out all of a sudden, well, the pricing might be a lot higher than what you anticipated. We said, well, also understand that any qualified supplier of lights is going to be, we're not going to expect us to include one type of lighting. All of a sudden, the bids came in quite a bit less than what our budget was, so it was, you know, that was due a lot to Moats Engineering and some of Brad's work on that, so, yeah.
Moving on, the treasurer's report. Mr. Tepper?
Yes, item 13 and A, we have our listed donations. This month, Texas Instruments was a large donor of over $4,500 to the Turpin High School Math Department, so we thank them and our other partners. Item B, we have our statement of board accounts. All accounts in good condition. We have three that we have pending funding requests for. Those are noted. Item C is our projected revenue. More than 68% of our projected revenue has been received, as we're getting those advances now in January and February for the tax collections. In D and E, we have the expenditures by function and object, a little bit ahead of the last three-year average when it comes to spending, but we're still on target with our current appropriations, so I don't see any issues there. This time of year, we move money where it needs to be spent, but it's still all within the fund of the general fund appropriations. That's how the boards approve them, so we're comfortable where we are at this point. Item F, we have the monthly bank reconciliations, and actually, the G is the portfolio of our general fund investments. I will, at some point in the future, share the bond portfolio as well. This is just the general fund. We've just, as Dr. Jackson mentioned, we just started recently investing the bond proceeds, hopefully generate some interest. We have some money going out two and three years per the schedule of projected expenses from the architects, so we anticipate some additional funding there. Item H, requesting approval of a small transfer of funds for the reconditioning of equipment and to cover a couple of the additional sports that we added at Nagle Middle School. Their operating budgets didn't absorb that, so we needed to give them some help to get through the year. So, this is the costs that they incurred in the fall to get these off the ground, so we're reimbursing them that. And item I, we're requesting approval for board service fund expenses. So, it's recommend the board approve all the items from our whole team, items nine through 13, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any specific questions on the treasurer's report? Hearing nothing, I'll then call for a vote. Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hummelgarn?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Moving on, reports to the board of education. 14.1, Business Advisory Committee Report.
Nothing since our last meeting. We do have another meeting. The next meeting would be on the 9th of March. We'll have an agenda out soon, but we anticipate, you know, some additional facilities topics, some investment topics, and some planning topics, so we'll get some of those out in the near future.
Item 14.2, Forest Hills Foundation Report. Mr. Fruman did provide a written report, and there are lots of things going on with the foundation. The monthly meeting of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education was held on February 11th. The foundation recently met with school district administrators and made a presentation on the foundation's goals and objectives. Presentation went very well, and we received great feedback from the district administration. Look forward to partnering with someone from the district on each of our five-year goals. Just yesterday, the foundation participated in a full-day retreat focused on the foundation's strategic goals and related issues, and I'd just like to make a personal comment. I appreciate everybody participating in that almost all-day session that Dee and Susan Mackey and some others orchestrated. I'd also like to just thank our superintendent for participating with all the other meetings that you have to go to. The fact that you spent the better part of your day there, I personally really appreciate. The foundation is sponsoring about 20 Destination Imagination teams this year. There are teams at every elementary school and at Nagle Middle School. DI is a program that teaches children how to work in teams to solve hands-on creative challenges designed to help them improve their soft confidence and communication skills. Forest Hills is proudly hosting the regional DI competition on Saturday, March 8th, from 8:00 to 5:00. Nearly 100 DI teams will attend from throughout Ohio and Kentucky. I've learned more about DI, and I realize that the fact that we're hosting that, that is a big deal. The foundation continues to sponsor ACT/SAT prep sessions. The next session is scheduled for March 21st at Nagle Middle School. There's some consideration of expanding the ACT/SAT preparation to include a full-day boot camp at each of the high schools. The Sixth Annual Forest Hills 5K is scheduled to proceed on Saturday, May 9th, at 8:30 at Nagle Middle School. Registration opens sometime this week, sometime this week. I assume Dee, that is correct. I think it was reported at the February meeting, the registration will open in two weeks. All major sponsors have once have been committed to support the race, Mercy and Wellington, Park National Bank, Total Quality Logistics, Children's Hospital, Mount Washington Care Center, and Kroger. The foundation continues to speak with other potential sponsors. The Forest Hills Foundation for Education Alumni Golf Outing is scheduled for July 11th. It's hard to think about now with the snow on the ground, but put that on your calendar, at Still Meadow Golf Course. And the eighth item, alumni newsletters were recently mailed. So, that is the report on the Forest Hills Foundation. And like I said, it's exciting to see a lot of things going on there. Moving on, let's see, the legislative report. Got three items to talk about when it comes to legislative. First is House Bill 7. The Senate took committee testimony on that bill. This bill would prohibit student scores on new park assessments for this school year from being used to make promotion or retention decisions or to grant course credit. decisions or to grant course credit. Um, the second bill that the Senate Education Committee is taking testimony on is Senate Bill Three. Uh, this is legislation that would make changes to the law regarding the amount of time spent on student testing. A Senate Bill Three would also provide relief from mandates for all schools, for all districts, and relief from additional provisions of the law for high-performing districts, and I believe we would actually benefit, uh, from some of the provisions in that bill. Uh, the third bill is House Bill Two. Uh, it's on community or charter school accountability. My understanding is this one would, um, uh, result in more even, uh, reporting of results, uh, with, from charter schools to public schools, and also, I believe there's some element of, uh, testing, where they would be required to do some of the testing that we're required to do. Uh, Dr. Jackson, we talked about this before the meeting, and actually, we both chose the same three bills to talk about. Do you want to add anything to those, uh, topics?
Actually, all three of the bills, um, House Bill Two, Senate Bill Three, and House Bill Seven. Um, I look at them, and, and although you gave a very brief summary, is that there are so many bullets of, of each one of those bills, and, and I look at those as basically kind of going back, and again, forgive me, but it's going back to what I kind of said before, you know, and, um, the state, uh, legislates things that we are required to do. Uh, usually they're funded. Uh, it spends a lot of time, and then along comes this types of legislation that kind of goes, "Oh, we may be better, we haven't thought about that," or this, and primarily, that's what all these bills are about. Um, the charter school is primarily a, uh, the House Bill Two regarding the charter school is primarily, um, more financial restrictions and regulations, which is indeed needed. Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased that the, uh, the Ohio Legislature is taking a look at that. Uh, when it comes to, um, some of the maybe possible relief from some of the legislation for high-performing districts, yes, it would be very, very beneficial, some of those things to us, but the last, uh, look at the requirements of what a high-performer district is, um, basically, there are only twenty-five districts across the state that would have qualified for that. So, unless that changes a little, and it may, as this goes through the House and the Senate, um, we would not benefit from those. So, but, uh, but anyway, that's, uh, it, again, these are just, um, uh, potential legislation, and they have not been passed as yet.
Um, as I speak with our legislators, uh, the three things that I've been focusing on are, one, the budget. Uh, of course, that's up in the air, and I think I reported last month that after a meeting with our state representative, I think his term was that the budget that probably everybody read about in the paper, I think his term was DOA. So, there's still a whole lot of work to be done, uh, to figure out just how that is going to impact our school district and the budget for next year. Rick, I don't know whether you've heard anything other than that. Uh, the second thing I'm lobbying our legislators on is the college credit plus, because to me, that's something where we need to have the flexibility to, uh, adjust where some of the fees are being paid and, uh, not put the burden solely on the school district. I can understand protecting, for example, free and reduced lunch, but I think there's some more politics behind that than meets the eye, and that, that needs to be adjusted and corrected. Um, the, uh, the third thing is, uh, the fact that we need some relief when it comes to, uh, how, uh, park testing is being treated, how the district is being treated, and if a student is not taking the test, uh, that we get a zero for that, and that's just flat-out wrong, and, uh, they need to correct that. And actually, Dr. Jackson and I both had a impromptu meeting with, uh, Representative Brinkman and shared that point of view with him, and I think he understands. Uh, we're hopeful that he'll initiate some legislation on that, because he has been a outspoken leader when it comes to common core. Um, I think that's all I had for legislative update. Let's see if anybody has any questions or comments. Uh, but I do want to make sure that you know those, uh, key issues, because those are things that I do, uh, push on and, uh, represent, uh, the school district and our board, uh, when, uh, lobbying legislators. Um, moving on, uh, item fourteen point four, Saga Report. Does anybody have a report on behalf, on Saga? Uh, don't know whether they met this month. Okay. Uh, now, uh, a new report to the board. Uh, it's my privilege to introduce Donna Lawver, who is the president of our Teachers Association, to give a report on behalf of the Teachers Association. Donna?
I like being last. I also want to make sure Susan Monk knows something. She's over here kind of quiet. This morning, when I came in, I was really excited, and, you know, we're all glad all the teachers be back at school. A lot of some nice things being said, and this one little kid comes up and goes, "I really miss that little lady that calls me and tells me not to come to school, Mrs. Lawver." I said, "That's Mrs. Monk, and I'm sure she's missing you too right now." I'll tell you that this morning. Uh, I just want to make sure, number one, I want to make sure I, uh, thank the board for accepting our invitation and outreach to be part of a monthly, uh, opportunity to kind of report more than just the general things everybody thinks that we do, but also talk a little bit more in-depth about, you know, the positive things that our association and our board and our district is doing together on that. So with that, and I just want to give you some quick highlights, um, just to kind of get people a little bit more know, and some of our new board people here, um, a little bit more information. So as we start off, what we like to start doing during these reports is giving us basically, you know, a very brief opportunity is to come forward, highlight our positive things and the way we can work together in the future. Uh, some real basic information about the association as it stands. Today, we're, uh, over four hundred members strong in our district. We have about thirty-plus volunteer building reps throughout the districts, so each building sends people forward. We have a six-member executive team. We are recognized in the state of Ohio. Um, there are over, I think about a hundred and forty thousand members of OEA, and we're considered one of the thirty-five largest associations in Ohio, which comes with a lot of exciting things. It gives us a lot of opportunity to be more involved. Uh, I know, Mr. Smith, the things you're speaking of as far as legislation, they coincide exactly with some of the opportunities that I've been fortunate to be more involved with in the state, uh, working with the budget, talking about the testing and so forth, and giving us those opportunities. Also, this year, um, we were very fortunate to receive one of six national OEA/NEA grants, which was quite a big honor for us, to help us improve and work collaboratively with our association and our board. Uh, the last thing just for you guys to kind of keep in mind is, we want to make sure that, as an association, that we are recognized as a partner towards the future here, and working always together with the passage of the bond and all the things that we do together to help our teachers, and it's exciting to see that opportunity with our administration and our teachers and the board working together towards improving teaching and learning in the school district. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and we look forward to meeting with you guys monthly here.
Thank you for your report. Uh, we will not have an executive session. Uh, before we close the meeting, uh, I did want to comment. We spent some extra time on a couple of topics this evening, but quite frankly, I think it was a pleasure to be speaking about topics that had to do with education, instead of some of the topics that we wind up having to do with from an administrative standpoint, or budget, or, uh, or some of the other problems that we wind up dealing with. Sorry, Rick, didn't mean to. But anyway, the, the point I'm trying to make is, uh, thank you for the reports, because it's exciting to see what's going on when it comes to, uh, education in our school district. Uh, I do want to remind the community to attend, uh, the individual meetings at the different schools, uh, for facilities, for the, for planning, and with that, I will remind everybody that the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be March twenty-third, and, uh, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hummelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.